Approximately 15 by 20 to sell his homemade sewn, knitted and baked goods items. Deb's Goods Home Process, registered with the New York State Department of Agriculture Markets. He might take some wood that he splits around the property and possibly some home-raised chicken eggs to sell as well. His intent is to purchase a 12-foot smoothboard drainage so the town highway department could fill in the ditch. And if need be, also have other drainage pipe installed to keep water from building up in the RSS area. Remove three trees that look like they could go at the next big storm we get. Put down a level stone. You have a nice foundation for the shed and parking lot for one to three patrons at a time. Plans on having solar energy to supply electric and a bit of warmth to this as well. Does anybody have any questions about any of this? No discussions need to be had. It seems pretty straightforward. Rob, Matt probably wouldn't have anything to add on this, would he?
Yeah, I am just texting Matt now to see if he's having trouble getting on the meeting. You might want to table this one until we find Matt because he's got more information on it.
Okay, all right, so we're tabling this for now and we'll come back when Matt appears. Okay, so then we're going to discuss, go on to the Jesse Coats. And David, thank you for that write-up. Did everyone get the write-up from David? Great shaking their head. Good. Okay, that was very helpful, so thank you very much. But I know that we still probably have some questions. And I also had sent out the letter from Sue Walton. She wasn't able to stay as long during the public meeting. It ran a lot longer than what she had time to be there for. And that was that the, that it was stated that, you know, that it won't have adverse effect on property values having the special permit for the ATV and auto mode of event hill climb mud bog time trial course. But he, she had contacted Gillian Romano, a real estate agent for Howard Hanna, who sold real estate for 43 years, and she said that this would definitely adversely affect the property values of the surrounding properties. And then she had checked out the other, the Pavilion Motocross Park that was there. So, and she had other concerns, number of people, strangers that could attract. And suggested a traffic study be done. All right, so you want to open up for discussions? Anybody just press your button to talk? No, we, I have questions. Bill, Lisa?
Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me? This is Bill Fust.
You're coming through loud and clear, Bill.
Okay, all right. So, I don't know that we received it, but I know another board member did some looking online to look at the Genesee County Planning Board review. And I think it was stated at the last, at the hearing that Genesee County had approved the request for special permit. At least at the copy of the thing that I'm looking at, it talks about a special use permit is granted to operate an ATV racetrack. It says nothing about automobiles or trucks. An ATV is defined to be an all-terrain vehicle for off-highway, designated for off-highway for low-pressure, non-pneumatic tires, having a seat designed to be straddled by an operator, and handlebars for steering control. So I guess my first question was, what exactly has Genesee County looked at and approved? And appears to be an ATV type of course only. And then also, under explanation, it kind of talks about, there might be approval, but it seems to be dependent on getting a New York State DEC approval because they were concerned about wetlands in the area. So I was hoping Matt would be there, but I'm trying to understand exactly what has the county approved? Because the way it was presented, it sounded to me like everything had been approved as presented, and I don't believe that's the case.
Hey, Bill, I am here. I apologize that I was running a little late getting hooked up to the Zoom meeting.
Hi, Matt. Did you hear my question?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. So give me one second and I will read exactly what the County Planning Board has approved.
I have a copy of it right here.
Oh, you do? Okay, so perfect. So basically, the idea of an all-terrain vehicle is something, you know, the definition is very ambiguous. It can be a four-wheeler, it can be a dirt bike, it could be, you know, something that is just a vehicle that's meant to, you know, like a Jeep or some type of souped-up truck.
That's not the definition I found when I Googled it.
Okay, well, in regard-
Again, that's what I'm trying to understand in terms of county government and town government. Well, how do we define ATV?
Well, it's, the ultimate definition is all-terrain vehicle, or the abbreviation is ATV is all-terrain vehicle. I think, in all honesty, I think that's a little bit of a mute point at this venture. What we're looking at is, Mr. Coats is applying for the special use permit to operate on that property, which is a little bit out of the norm of what's allowed in an AGRAS district. So what that really means is you just have some things that you need to, you need to account for to operate that type of application that he's proposing.
The reason I'm poking at it, Matt, is in my mind, there's a lot different level of disruption, noise, dust, et cetera. If this track and if this event is for larger vehicles as opposed to what I consider to be the true definition of what ATV is, and I'm thinking of like four-wheelers. So that's why I'm trying to get clarification before anything gets approved further. What is it we're talking about and what has the county signed off on? And I did not see anything in the description about any kind of motor vehicle.
Gotcha, okay. And that's something that we would refer back to the applicant to provide you as the planning board some information on exactly what he defines an all-terrain motor vehicle, or an ATV as versus what you may perceive it as. That's something that we all need to work together with the applicant, which is proposing this idea, and the information that you guys require to make a good decision on this.
Okay, just wanted to queue this up because the 62 days is counting down, and we need to know clearly what, where the county stands on this.
Absolutely, and I talked to Mr. LaPointe, the town supervisor today, and Mr. Roach is here, I see. And we wanted to get a little bit of clarification in regards to this application. And if, if there is further information required on behalf of the planning board and the applicant to make, to render a good decision, Mr. Roach, would you be able to speak on behalf of, if the planning board was to table this and ask the applicant for further information, does that 62 days pause? Or are we still within that 62 days that we need to render a decision?
No, the 62 days doesn't pause, but it is, it's commonplace.
Okay.
When you have, you know, a proposal such as this, as complicated as it may be, to by agreement extend beyond the 62 days. And usually by agreement because, you know, as it stands right now, it could be denied just by virtue of the insufficiencies in the, in the application. You know, again, I'm, as stated in my letter, I'm coming into this and looking at it from the viewpoint of a court, if there were to be a challenge on this from either the applicant or anyone who was opposed to it. And as it stands right now, if a decision was, was made, one way or the other, I don't think that the court would have a sufficient record to review the rationale for that decision. I mean, there's just, as I say in the letter, there's a dearth of information. And, you know, this is, to back up a little bit, this is not my first rodeo with a ATV racecourse like this. I was involved in the Taylor Road course back, I think it was 2009, 2010, that timeframe. So a lot of what I'm presenting as far as criteria and conditions are such that have been used and, and, you know, tested previously. And, you know, from most accounts, it's worked out. So there's a lot of more information we need. I came into this late. I'm not sure how the 239M referral, the referral to the County Planning Board came to be at the time it did. It seems a bit premature. There is some case law that suggests that the County Planning Board should have in front of it to make a decision, everything that the town Planning Board has as well. And we're going to gather a lot more here if this application's going to proceed. And so I would, I would say that the 239M referral is premature. The County Planning Board doesn't have enough for itself to review and render decision and propose any modifications. So we can get in to the laundry list of things that I think the Planning Board should request of the applicant. There, nothing is out of the ordinary in that regard. And it's going to take time, especially during these COVID times. You know, thankfully, things are loosening up, but I still think this is going to take longer than it otherwise would under a typical scenario. So, you know, the 62 days, it would not surprise me if we're going beyond that. But again, we can say, listen, it's 62 days, we need more than 62 days in order to complete the record. And if we don't have a complete record, we can't make a rational decision. Well, I guess I would, I would ask anyone if they have any questions of me pertaining to either the legal framework or the additional information we should be requesting of the applicant. I'm happy to talk about either.
Go ahead, Matt, I'm sorry.
Who's talking?
It's me, Matt. I just want, I just wanted to respond to Mr. Roach. I appreciate your comments. And I think on behalf of the Building and Zoning Department, we are in full agreeance. And we have had conversations with Mr. Coats and his representation, which is working on a sufficient site plan about what's required. And the biggest question we had, and like I had mentioned, I talked to the town supervisor, Mr. LaPointe. We were just concerned about following our legal obligations in regards to that 62 days and making sure that we're following everything on point. You know, we understand, and I believe the applicant understands as well, the, this, the required information that we need on behalf of the planning board to make a sound decision and the information that needs to be supplied by the applicant. And I think the communication needs to stay open and it has been very well. The planning board was, was a little thrown off because it was such a large, you know, such a very emotionally charged, large public hearing that there were some very good points brought up, but we do need to sit back and look at what's required to make a sound decision. And I think from going forward, as long as we know that it's 62 days can be extended, we should be okay as long as we keep that communication open with the, with the applicant.
Yeah, and I think at this point, it would be, when we come to a consensus on what we, what we need, what the board wants and needs to conduct its review, Matt, I think we would submit that in writing. If, again, I'm not the town council here. I usually know the sort of the nuances of my boards and how they work. But here, Matt, perhaps we send that through you. If you've been the liaison typically between an applicant, I mean, that's your role statutorily. So we could send it through you and then, you know, communications in response can be directed through you. Does the, does Mr. Coats have a, an engineer working on this?
Well, Mr. Krasinski, which is online with us at this point in time, is a more or less a construction consultant that has worked with many large projects and is fully capable of providing the information required. I have had conversations with Mr. Krasinski, and I would open the floor to allow him to speak on behalf of what he can provide. And I truly think that Mr. Coats, the applicant, which having Mr. Krasinski, the construction manager or professional in hand, is going to help him supply what's required. I also want to just indicate, because I know the planning board was involved in that group message from you, Mr. Roach, what the criteria is in our zoning code, which we had pointed out in the previous public hearing meeting, of what's required for not only site plan review, but special use permit review criteria. And that's, that kind of outlines exactly what's required for the planning board to make a sound decision, like I said. So at this point, you know, like I said, I'll turn the table.
So Matt, thank you. So my name's David Serinski. I am a construction consultant, owner's rep. I was at the public hearing, the marathon hearing that you guys had. It was quite emotionally charged. And, you know, as I'd stated in that, you know, my job is to try and take all the information that is required by the code and put that into the proper formats and get that over to you guys for making a decision. With that, I did have meetings with Jesse and Jolene today to talk about the project and what needs to happen. And I have engaged in a civil engineer to help us with this project, to start getting things laid out. We're going to be doing topographical surveys and delineating wetlands so we can make the applications to the DEC and to the Army Corps of Engineers appropriately, which we normally would have to do on a project like this. None of this is out of the ordinary. It's just that we got the cart before the horse here a little bit on this project. And we just need to, you know, regroup a little bit and put things together in the proper manner. So there'll be proper surveys, proper, you know, site plan with proposed project delineations on it, as well as delineations of wetlands and the setbacks and everything that's required by code will be on those drawings along with the engineer's report. You know, just discussing anything that you can't put on the drawings that needs to be talked about verbally. So we're in the process of doing that. And I did have a conversation with Mr. Mahaney today regarding this. And I agree with him that possibly we should table this, this decision on this until we can get you the proper information so you can make informed decisions. And I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
Just as a future housekeeping matter, then David, you're going to be the point person to communicate any requests for?
Yeah, I'll be the point person. And I'll, I believe Mr. LaPointe has my contact information from an email that I sent him, so.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I suppose I could get into detail as to the things that I've suggested. But I think that, you know, we will get that to you in writing so that we have sort of a checklist to go through. And we can check off one at a time and know when from our end we're complete. The, there are wetlands, I understand, is that we already know that is the case? And has, there's a pending application with the DEC?
We have to make the application. We've, we've contacted the DEC verbally and by email. We've also contacted the Army Corps of Engineers, and they've been out to the site to help us delineate where the wetlands are. So we're in that process. We just have to get them, the engineers' drawings so they can finalize their letters of approvals.
Okay, and you mentioned a civil engineer has been engaged. Who's going to be doing that?
We're in the middle of finalizing that contract right now. But right, right now, we're talking to Sarah Gilbert. She's a licensed engineer out of the Chi-Lite area.
She's a PE?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a quick question, if I could, if anybody can hear me. My internet connection's not great and I apologize for that.
We have you, Tim. We can hear you.
Okay, regarding the DEC permit, has the DEC given you any kind of a timeline on how fast they're going to turn on a permit these days? And the reason I ask is I know we have a limited amount of time to make a decision. And I think the permit would be part of that decision, the outcome of that permit. I know from my background, I deal with a lot of DEC permits. And I know even as of recently, it's been taking a significant amount of time from DEC. And I know it really depends on who you talk to there. But I know, I was, I'm just wondering if there's going to be an issue with our timeline to make a decision and the timeline that's going to take them to look at a permit and make sure that's not a complete permit and any kind of justification they have or stipulations they have. I'm just kind of wondering if that's going to be an issue at all.
The DEC hasn't given us an indication of how long they're taking, but I agree with you. I have other permits and DEC, Department of Health, Department of Transportation, and they're all taking about a month to two months extra right now. But again, that, you know, that's up to you guys on how you're able to handle the 62 days with the, any agreements that we would need to extend it.
I've heard that they're, the state is taking people from DEC and other departments and actually putting them into, into different roles to help with the whole COVID issue. So it's, it's, once again, COVID's being a pain in the butt, but that answers my question. Thank you.
Yes.
Before we go much further on this, can we go back to Owen? Matt, we were waiting for you to come on board with it, so, and we tabled it, and it's, you know, since we had him.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, we read what his, what he is looking to do and didn't know if you had anything to add to any of it.
I'm sorry, you, you were reading what Mr. Coats was ready to do, that application? Okay.
Sorry, no, no, Owen, Owen, I'm sorry.
I'll tell you what, I think it would just be beneficial at this point in time to discuss and kind of clarify everything with Mr. Coats' application just because of the situation we're in with the Zoom meeting before we kick back and forth between two applications. Mr. Giles' application is not so much, it's not a special use permit. It's actually just site plan review, so it's a little less, little less information required on behalf of the applicant. I would just want to try to emphasize our time, which we have Mr. Roach online for our legal representation as well as Mr. Corin, I'm sorry, David Korinski in regards to, you know, Mr. Coats in the application, so we don't leave them online too long to clarify what, what we need to take care of on behalf of the Coats' application.
Okay, sorry, Owen, for too first of all.
Sorry, Owen.
Well, if I can speak, I would, I'd suggest that we resolve to issue a, a list of additional documents and information and studies from the applicant, and then we can put that together. You can start with what I've provided, add to it, subtract to it. And once we've got something that we think is ready to go, we can send it out. We don't necessarily need to arrive at that right now. I think if we have a resolution to, through me, send a request to David on behalf of the Coats, then we can, you know, proceed from there. I'm only thinking of time here because we, we could attempt to mold a list right now. But if someone's more optimistic than me that it can be done within an hour or so, I'm happy to stay on board during this Zoom. Otherwise, again, we can resolve to send it out. And anybody, everybody has my email address. Anything that they want to add, we can add. I defer back to you, Miss Free, on that.
All right, do we want to make a motion to, that we can work on the list of requirements? I know we'll do it through email versus trying to accomplish that tonight? Anyone?
It's acceptable to me.
Yes, Deb, on behalf of the, the department and staff, we would strongly, you know, we'll get something over to the applicant, which, talking to David and even Mr. Coats after the meeting, I think they're very appreciative of the information that needs to be provided. And at this point, we need that further information for you guys to make a decision.
We make a motion? Anyone?
Yes, this is Bill. I'll make a motion that we get that done. And do we need to kind of set a date of, you know, a week or so to make sure it gets out in a timely way?
It would probably be a good idea. Anyone second?
I'll second it.
Okay, good. Do we want to do, what do we think, a week, 10 days out? Okay, sorry, all in favor, let me see, your name?
I wanted to interject real quick. Dave, what's, what's acceptable to you that you feel you can actually provide the information that, I know you and I had already had the discussion and it parallels what Mr. Roach passed through in regards to the review? What's your expectation of being able to provide that information?
Yeah, it's going to take at least a month to get through the engineering and everything. So it may make, it may take time and I wanted to send you an update as soon as I have more information from the various organizations that we got to deal with, you know, it's going to be the engineer's time. But then, once we get things into the DEC or the Army Corps, and try to get a timeline from them because that way we can see if we need to request an extension on the decision-making and come up with an agreement.
Fair enough. Deb, I just wanted to interject and I apologize. I just wanted to keep things realistic of, you know, the information that is being requested on behalf of the planning board in the town. It is things, as Mr. Welch outlined as well. It's not something that could possibly be turned around in a week's time, so just keep that in mind.
Matt, I think the motion was to provide a list within one week. That's definitely, and then we will need the response back in. And then we will need the response back in a timetable that makes sense.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And is a week, is a week enough time for us to go back and forth this to work with David to come a list? We want to take a little bit more time to do that and then we need to make a motion. You guys all need to yea or nay.
I know on my end, I'd have, there's nothing that would delay me on my end, but with the, the potential back and forth, I would suggest perhaps that we get the letter out no later than next Friday.
That's sufficient on behalf of the department as well.
I'm okay with that. So that's a week and a half from now.
Okay, all right. Everybody chime in?
Hi.
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 Lisa?
Hi.
Gary?
Yep, hi.
Is Don there?
Hi.
Okay, motion passed. We'll get, we'll go back and forth through emails to formulate a letter to go out by next Friday. Working with David through email.
Thank you for your time. If you don't have anything more for me, I'm going to sign off.
I have a, sorry, a list of comments from Ron Zarbo. He wished to have them submitted to the board and added to the minutes. I've emailed them out to all of you. I didn't know if that's something that you want to go over now or you'd rather just read as a board or, you know, you can deal with it however you want, but I, he handed it to me, so I wanted to let you know.
It might be good. We've got, we've got a lot of material. It'd be good to probably gather it all that we can have it and present to David, you know, as a little package.
These are comments from a community member on the application?
Yes, sir.
Was the public comment period held open? At the end of the public hearing?
No, it was not. It was, the public hearing was closed at that point in time, on that date.
Okay.
No.
Okay, I didn't know, I didn't know one way or the other, but I'm happy to review it. It's not tech, my only concern would be, you know, the slippery slope here that we're bending the rules a little bit and the next thing we know, the public is submitting more and more comments and we don't have any sense of finality to the comment period. But beyond that, I'd be fine in reviewing it.
Sorry, I'm not sure if you can hear us. We're having internet problems here at, at town again. I, I'm assuming that you said since the public comment period was no longer open that, you know, we have no legal obligation to present these live at the board meeting. They were distributed to the planning board members on email. Is there anything more that we need to do than that?
No.
Very good then. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. LaPointe.
All right, Deb, so, so did we have a?
All right, then, we are pretty much set with this for now and we'll move on and do this through email. So do we want to go back to the, the, was it Owen Guile?
Okay, then I'm.
Back to Owen Guile's now?
Yeah, and I'll sign off.
For some reason, we can't hear you, so.
Thank you, David. I appreciate your time. I understand you're signing off because we're moving on to another, another situation as well as David Krasinski. And we will follow up and make sure that we communicate and all the lists are supplied to the applicant by that deadline.
Okay, thank you.
Deb, can you hear me?
We're having audio problems down here. I'm not quite sure what's going on. My computer and Deb's computer, who's in the office next door are not displaying any audio.
So I'm going to continue talking. Hopefully this, you know, if anybody can hear me. There, there is the option also. I don't know if anybody's, you know, zoomed before, but there is, you can, you know, raise your hand or if you have any questions, we can, we can operate that manner just so that way we're not talking over each other because it is very difficult when we're not sitting face to face. So I'm going to begin in regards to Mr. Owen Guile's application. His application is to operate a roadside stand or homemade gifts prod, products, more or less retail establishment. It's going to be somewhat smaller than what our current, you know, what our typical definition of retail is. But he has outlined that it's going to be more or less a roadside stand. He produces homemade products along with his wife. The fortunate part about Mr. Guile's application is that he actually is located in a commercial district. Being that he's located in a commercial district, it allows for this type of use. It just requires that because it's commercial, it needs to have site plan review. Mr. Guile is online with us today and I would like to point out as well, the application was submitted to the Genesee County Planning Board for referral. And I will read exactly what the county planning board has referred to the local planning board. They have decided to refer approval with modifications. The required modifications are as follows. Any signage complies with the town zoning regulations, which we always try to enforce, as well as the applicant shift the customer parking area from the roadside to the turnaround area off the main driveway in order to prevent customer vehicles from backing out onto Linwood Road. With these required modifications, the proposed roadside stand should pose no significant or countywide or intercommunity impact. I have had a conversation with Mr. Guile after the referral from the county planning board and, and he was also in attendance for this meeting. He is in full understanding that the site plan might need a little bit more detail in order to provide what the county has referred to, more or less provide safety for pedestrians or vehicles to come on and off of the property. Because he's fully aware of that and we had had the discussion that he should provide just a little more detailed site plan. And I will also turn it over to Mr. Guile so he can more or less express what his intent is and outline what his operations are for the planning board.
All right, I just saw one out today after I talked to you today, Matt. I went out and did a measurement and the road is actually 42 feet away from where the front of the stand is going to be at. And that's the main road and the current turnaround that I have is 21 by 18. And basically I'll just tie that into where I fill in the stone and put the corrugated pipe and everything like that. So there's 42 feet of space in front and plus I'll have 22 feet from, I'll have 42, about 43 feet from the south side of the roadside stand to my main driveway. Where it gives the opportunity for customers to use that to go in and out of the, the, the store or the roadside stand. It gives them the opportunity to do that, to decide back out on the road. I can't do anything about that.
Yeah, and at this time, I would open it up to the planning board to possibly ask any questions or concerns they may have on behalf of Mr. Guile's application. You know, besides what has been already provided, our departmental recommendations is just that Mr. Guile kind of supplies you guys, the, the planning board, with a little more detailed site plan showing where the parking and such is with a little more measurements in order to ensure that, that safety for, for customers coming in and out of his operations. Once again, like I said, the, this, the application is just for site plan review. It's not for a special use permit because Mr. Guile is located in a commercial district. His operations are fully allowed without a special use permit. He just needs to provide a sufficient site plan in order to ensure that, that criteria that we're reviewing is fulfilled and reviewed. So it is a much different situation compared to the previous application for the Koots ATV operation that we're talking about. So at this time, I'll just turn it over to the planning board for whoever wants to have some questions or discussions in regards to Mr. Guile's application.
I got a question.
Liz, you're muted. Liz, you have to unmute yourself.
Oh, am I on now?
There you go, yeah.
Sorry, I thought I had it right. I've never seen a business certificate before and it says 2007. Do they ever renew that or once you have a 2007, once you have a business certificate, it's okay for a long time?
That's the way I understand it. It is.
Okay.
I have it for it up at the Genesee County building there on the second floor there from where the DMV is there. I don't know what building that is though.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I've never seen one before, that's all.
Yeah, I have a tax ID number too as well.
Yep, I see that. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything, any other questions for?
I'm just going to interject one thing as well. So obviously we are an ag residential community and we encourage those type of operations. Mr. Guile has highlighted that, you know, more or less he wants to put a roadside stand in. And that falls within that gray area of something that's allowed without any type of review or permit because of being in almost an ag residential operation, you know, whether he's selling homemade goods, baked goods, or if it was more or less a roadside vegetable stand, something like that. The important thing that, when I talk to Mr. Guile in regards to what his future intentions are, is sufficient advertisement with signs. And that was mentioned as well with the Genesee County Planning Board to stay within those. But we wanted to afford Mr. Guile the opportunity to put signs up because typically in an agres district, we shy away from big signs because it's, it's either farms or residences and we don't want to see signs in place that kind of, that, that go against what our country living setting is. But Mr. Guile is in that commercial district and we just wanted to go through this process to afford him that ability to advertise.
Anybody have any other comments? Questions, anything to add? So Matt, do we just table this till he has his site plan finished or what?
In, in, yes, I would recommend it and I talked to Mr. Gallis more, or earlier today and just, you know, kind of paralleled what the county's referral was. And I think it would be good for the planning board just to request a little bit further detailed site plan. Because the size of his operation is not going to be huge. It's, Mr. Guile also has indicated that he is not looking to do this tomorrow. So it affords us a little bit of time to get things set up and just make sure that we have the proper documentation for you guys to review and on file as well. So that way, even though this is not a special use permit, he's supplying us with a site plan that we can make sure that that site plan is sufficient and stays the way it's supposed to be for, for the time being until he chooses to change things if need be.
Okay, well then. Does somebody have something to add? Okay, well then let's, we'll wait until we get the more detailed site plan and then we can move forward with this.
Okay, now is there a timeframe that I need to get this back?
Well, honestly, the timeframe kind of relies on you. We're, I don't think we're really pushing it, just like the last application you were kind of listening to, the discussion in regards to it. What I can do is I will supply you our, our list out of our zoning code, which requires certain information in regards to the site plan that, that may be applicable to your application. And I can get you that information tomorrow so that way you can get working on it. As far as putting a deadline in place for you, I don't feel that the planning board needs to put a deadline in. It's more or less when, whenever you can provide that information to the planning board.
Right, okay, that's, that sounds good. You know, like I said before, man, I just wanted to do this so that way if someone from the town goes driving by, they're not like saying what the heck is going on here and stuff like that, you know what I mean?
Oh, absolutely. And we always appreciate when somebody reaches out to us. You know, what you're looking to do, I think from the sounds of it, it has community support and the community wants to support its residents. We just want to make sure that we cover all the bases that's required for review. That way you're able to operate fully and freely as well as, you know, not have any detriment to neighboring properties. That's all.
Okay. That sounds good.
All right.
Okay, is there any other business that we need to discuss?
I would just recommend you guys make a resolution or a motion on that, just so that way it's, it's official in the minutes. And, and, you know, like I said, I am the kind of the, the middle man, so I'll make sure I get the information over to Mr. Guile and as well as get the information back over to the planning board so that way at whatever meeting date, we can, we can take care of that.
So make a motion that we're going to table this until we get more of a site plan and then will we go through over review or?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion?
I move.
Okay, we are good on that. Is there any other? Oh, sorry, forgot to vote, everybody. Liz, Lisa, Gary?
I, yes, whatever.
I'm sorry. All right, all right, Bill, Dan, okay, we're all good.
Wait, I have a question.
Yep.
Um, who was first on that? Just for recording purposes?
Don.
Don, oh, okay, thank you.
The blank name.
Yeah.
Okay, Matt, was there any other business or anything else on the agenda to talk to about?
Not at this point in time. I just, I, you know, just a quick second, I wanted to encourage the planning board. You guys are doing a great job. I don't want you to get overwhelmed because of the last public hearing. You know, it was a very emotionally charged hearing and it was very long. So I don't want you guys to get discouraged that we're not going to follow through with the required information to do a full, to fully review this and make a sound decision. You know, our department is, is the, is backs you guys in order to make a good decision and ensure that you have the right information. Yes, this was a, an application that was lacking a lot of detail. And I just want to ensure you guys that we will not put you in a position that you cannot make a decision without all the full information. You guys did a great job with it, with the, the public hearing. I think going forward, you just have to remind yourselves that you don't need to be pushed or rushed into making a decision. We have the right to require more information, further information, and so you guys can make a sound decision. Just like tonight, we cannot, we cannot complete the seeker app, the seeker that was provided to us on behalf of the Koots application because we don't have enough information to render a decision on that. So, you know, we're here to answer your questions. So, you know, we're here to answer your questions departmentally. Feel free to call us at any point in time. We don't, we don't want you guys to feel pressured. We don't want you to rush through this. We want you to do exactly what you guys do. You're a very good board with a wide variety of ideas and aspects. And backgrounds, so we feel that your, your decision is very valid and we don't want you to feel pressured. So I just wanted to throw that in there so that way we don't. You guys don't feel pressured and you're able to do what you're, you're, you were chosen to do.
Thank you for that. And I think that said, let's make sure that anyone that has any list of questions, any, anything at all. Let's start getting them within the next day or two, put it together that we can just kind of present to David and, you know, find out, you know. You know, whatever, whatever information, whatever answers we need to, to make the list to present to, to Coontz on that. So, so if everybody can just, you know, take the time, like I said, next couple of days, let's get this going so we're not, you know. Passing by our deadline of next Friday.
Last thing, Deb, I just want to throw out to the planning board. The, the thing we need to focus on is section 808, okay? So we don't want to get too involved and obviously we have legal representation to help us out so that way, not as a. We're not doing this as a. We just want to make sure we do it correctly. Now, section 808 clearly defines the review criteria that we need to focus on. So section 808 is going to give us a breakdown in a checklist of the review material for site plan review. As well as special use permit. So we do not want to waiver from what those, what that checklist is. Just as Mr. Krasinski knows, that's his checklist. He's a professional. He knows how, how to go through this. And I've seen him do it before, but we have to make sure that we follow this as well, you know. As, you know, we also want to think about some of the, the details that were brought up during that public hearing. But this checklist in section 808, the two checklists, I'm sorry, are going to show us exactly what we need to review. In order to render a decision. So until we have all that information provided to us and until we can basically check one off for the other. That's what we need to focus on.
I think we still might have some questions that, you know, we would like answers to. You know, maybe if they're not necessarily clearly stated in section 808, but it would just be some clarification on. It'd be nice if we can just, you know, do email, you know, to back and forth to, so everybody's comfortable with that, you know, having all the information they feel like.
Absolutely. I just want to remind everybody too, this is a fully public application. This is a full. You know, everything that you do as a board is fully foilable. It's fully accessible by everyone. So what we need to do is make sure that we professionally look at every detail and respond appropriately.
Have a question?
Sure.
Can I have a little more explanation on the 62 days then? Are we, has it been extended?
So as Mr. Roach had explained, it has been extended. It's basically been put on pause and that was, that was our key reason for. You know, Mr. Lapointe wanted to have Mr. Roach involved because that was something that was a little, little fuzzy to us. Is we wanted to make sure that that 62 days, if we did not make a render a decision within that 62 days, which is New York State town law. That automatically the application would be approved. We wanted to ensure that everything you guys are doing on behalf of the planning board. Is legal and within means. So what Mr. Roach has explained is because you guys had a resolution or a motion. To more or less require more information, it has paused that 62 days.
Thank you.
And that was the very important thing that in, in Mr. Lapointe wanted to have legal representation to clarify that for us. Because we didn't want to get in a position where we asked for more information. We didn't render a yea or nay. And all of a sudden, the application just went through because we didn't do our due diligence.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to add?
I just want to jump in quick. Regarding holding these meetings over Zoom and trying to do them in person, I want to first thank all of you for being flexible. With doing this remotely for the first time. There was the executive order that came out two days ago that allows now for 25 people instead of 10 to be at a nonessential gathering. Which does give us a little bit more flexibility, but honestly, it didn't give me enough time to get the logistics of trying to work out an in-person. Meeting because our courtroom is still too small to accommodate everybody at the distance that's required. So I am going to be working on a plan over the next month to see if we can find a creative solution to do the July meeting in person. But if anybody has any ideas on how they would like to do it, please shoot them my way because I'm, you know, we're all improvising here in this situation. We're all doing our best and the rules of the game keep getting changed. So the best we can do is, is get creative about it and keep communicating with one another. The one thing that I really can't do effectively, in my opinion, is to have another hybrid meeting. Both in person and on Zoom. We did do that for the public hearing, but it was clunky and difficult because. The town doesn't have the equipment to pipe the audio from the Zoom into the sound system. We don't have enough microphones to. Pump board comments, you know, into the Zoom. So if we do go with an in-person, it's going to have to be 100% in-person. No Zoom, or if we go with a Zoom, it's going to be 100% Zoom, just because there's too many technical aspects involved. And we, we have a legal obligation to allow everybody to do this stuff. So we, we don't just get to say, oh, we had technical difficulties. We, we did it differently tonight because then we're not functioning under our legal obligations. So if you have any ideas on how to do this in person and have lots of distance between us, please shoot me an email or a call. And thank you again.
Rob, is the fire hall not an option?
I haven't spoken with them about using it long term.
I mean, it's.
That is one of the things that I'm thinking about.
It's a community resource, just an idea.
Yes. Another, another option that some of the towns have done is they've pulled the trucks out of their highway garage and done it out there. On a night like tonight, I think we could probably just do it in the parking lot, to be honest with you. It's so beautiful out, but who knows, it might be pouring rain in July. So, yeah, I'm trying to explore all those different possibilities.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else, anything? Do you take a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion to close.
Okay, second?
I can second that.
Okay, thank you. All right, everybody then, we'll just be communicating through email. And Dan, I just want to say that you, I haven't seen you forever. You look like a linebacker or something.
I look like what?
A linebacker or something, that or a big mean giant, I don't know.
A big, a big teddy bear that's got a headache from all these Zoom meetings every day.
Yeah, they're fun.
I wanted to get here a little bit earlier, but we had a, we had a town board meeting too, so.
Well, we appreciate you stopping in and thank you, everybody. We will, we'll be communicating. All right, meeting is adjourned.